Utaica Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tom Glasgow, could you lead us, sir?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Sakura.
Here.
Trenzey.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deanne.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Calendino.
Here.
All present, and we have a quorum. At this time in the meeting, we open up the floor for anyone from the public that would like to speak to counsel for any item on the agenda, and you will be allowed three minutes to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak tonight? All right. Next on the agenda is consent business. There is one typo that we need to amend. Under Roman numeral 2B, the minutes are incorrectly listed for 9:13, which is in the future. So it hasn't happened yet. It should read 8:13, 2024. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve consent business with the aforementioned amendment.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by Sakura. Any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. There's no unfinished business or correspondence, so we will go into new business, department reports. I'll kick things off. I'd like to thank Parks and Rec for a very successful Trash to Treasure event at Grant Park over the weekend. It was a brand-new event. It seemed to be pretty popular. When I came by, I saw a lot of attendees, a lot of interesting things. I even bought myself a little something. We don't have to mention what it is. Are you embarrassed about your purchase, Mr. Mayor? It's a side flask, which I guess ages me. Oh. And the comment I got was, why don't you just use your water bottle? But I don't know.
Not in high school?
So thank you to Parks and Rec. Great event. You guys did a great job. Friday was the last event for Weekend Unwind for 2024. It was a great season. A lot of people attended, great bands. Like to thank everyone that did attend and all the bands that were involved. And I also like to thank Host Utica for sponsoring the event. It was a really great season. I'm already starting to schedule next year, so excellent, excellent time. Every Friday night at Memorial Park from 7:00 till 10:00 p.m. We look forward to another successful year next year. And last, I would just like to announce, we have our Nightmare in Auburn event coming on October 5th, Saturday, from noon until 8:00 p.m. This year, we've tweaked things a little bit to make it even more successful. Last year, we really, it was our first year, we really had no idea what the attendance was going to be, and it was, we were pleasantly surprised. We think we had about 4,000 people throughout the day, so we're expecting even more this year. We've got a major sponsor with the help of Connect McComb. We've got some really excellent bands. We have a band called Creepy Clyde. He's really neat. I think adults and kids alike are going to enjoy what he does. We have a local band called The Dads, and then a legendary band in the Detroit music scene called The 3D Invisibles are the headliner, and they'll be playing from 7:00 till 8:00 p.m. There is a Facebook event post, so if anybody needs more information, feel free to go look there. I'm sure we're going to have a lot of posts coming up about it, but that's Saturday, October 5th, from noon until 8:00 p.m. And that's all I have is, does anyone else on counsel have anything they'd like to?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So just to piggyback on that weekend, October 4th, homecoming parade downtown Utica, our chieftains be celebrating the homecoming. I know that I'll be wearing orange and black as all good chieftains will. Will you be there as a chieftain? Mr. Councilman, will you be there?
I'm sure I will be there.
Yeah, so 4 o'clock starts the parade downtown Utica. Feel free to come out and visit our fine establishments and celebrate Utica's homecoming game.
Excellent. And if there's not a lot of wind, we hope to have Chief, our mascot Utica puppy, right out in front of City Hall, so fun times for all. Thank you, Councilman Deanne.
I have something, too. I just wanted to thank fire and police for coming to Apple Fest this weekend. It's the casual Apple Fest, but it's really heartwarming when you see the police and fire out visible where we can see them and, you know, people milling about. It's a good feeling, so thank you so much for your presence there. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Trenzey. Anyone else from counsel? All right. Tonight, we have nothing from planning, assessing, or building. Ms. Francis, a report on library. Nothing to report. Chief Wilson, report from fire.
Yeah, Mayor and counsel, before you, we received a FEMA grant, E M W 2023 F G 06581. With this award, we're going to replace all of our hose and attack lines. Nothing's been replaced since I've been here, and it was old when I got here. I think they're like from the 80s. They pass inspections, but we're running kind of under the gun with that, you know, if we had a failure. So we got this money to replace everything, so everything will be new. And with that being said, the award is for $71,371.42 from FEMA with the city's match of $3,568.58 for a grand total of $79,940. The Utica Fire Department, like I said, will replace 20- to 30-year-old tack lines and nozzles. I guess I need a motion to accept the FEMA grant, E M W 2023 F G 06581, and authorize Brian O'Lawsky to accept the award on behalf of the city. This affects two accounts. The equipment account is one.
Well, let's get, let's get that motion.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Trenzey. Any discussion from counsel?
Is it 74.9? Because I thought you said 79.9.
Yeah, he said 74,040.
Don't have my glasses.
Just wanted to make sure. Just wanted to make sure.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries. Your next item, Chief.
Okay. The second motion is to amend F 2025 general fund budget, transferring $71,370 from the revenue account 101-336-505-108 to revenue account 101-336-505-108-F06581, and transferring $74,940 from expenditure account 101-336-981-108 to expenditure account 101-336-981-108-F06581.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Trenzey. Any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries. And your final item.
The final item is, we're going to, we're going out to attain bids and to purchase this, and I would like to be authorized to spend that amount with the mayor's approval. I'll show them the best bill.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Ryan. Any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else to report tonight, Chief?
Oh, no. We're, I got two new hires. Hopefully, we can get them background in. But if anybody's out there and wants to come to the Utica Fire Department, have an EMT or firefighter certification, come down and see us.
Excellent.
I just wanted to say real quick, I just wanted to thank Brian O'Lawsky for the amount of time and effort he puts into all of these, these grants. They are quite in the process of actually putting them together, and there's a lot that our department wouldn't have if it wasn't for these assistance to firefighter grants. So thank you to Captain Brian O'Lawsky for his time and effort and dedication.
Ditto.
Chief Glusney, please report.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. The first item I have up for you is our dispatch radio tower. This has been a elongated project, coming on about four years, if not a little bit more, of upgrading our department communication system and ultimately the radar, or the radio tower. The current tower that's there right now was donated to the city. There were best intentions that were in place to try and make it as fiscally responsible. Unfortunately, during the sign-off process with the state, it was deemed that that tower is not safe and will not pass state inspections. So unfortunately, we had to go to Plan B, which is try and look for another tower. This has been an extensive process of trying to deal with getting soil samples, dealing with tower manufacturers, getting tower quotes, and ultimately figuring out the excavation. In putting together this project, I've had some money put aside in our liquor, our alcohol liquor control fund, and it's money that's specifically given to the police department, and it needs to go back into the enforcement of any type of alcohol enforcement, obviously using radios to communicate, to, you know, get our guys out, dealing with junk drivers on the road, all that kind of stuff fits into the bill here. This project's kind of a three-phase project, three different companies that I have doing the work. The first one is the excavation done by J I S I Solutions. Based on the soil that's out there, they need to do pretty extensive engineering and design to actually put the base to hold the tower. The current tower that's there right now is realistically sitting on about a six-by-six slab of concrete. The engineering that's needed is pretty extensive if you read through the documentation that's in there. So I would be looking for a motion to kind of fully approve this project. The total cost of the project is $112,540.47. In one of my motions, I am going to be asking for the amount that's in my alcohol fund just to, just in case there is any side things that come to bear the, we're going to attempt to try and use the existing lines that are on the tower. My tower installer believes that he'll be able to transfer those lines over. I'd just like to have the funds available if, in case we do need to purchase some additional lines. So I'd like to start with requesting a, motion requesting approval to enter into a contract with J I S I for excavation and foundation work for a total cost of $58,000.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trenzey, support by Ryan. Any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries.
My second motion would be to request approval to purchase the tower from Allstate Tower for a total cost of $31,000.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Robinson. Any discussion from counsel?
Is that part of the total cost you gave us, $112?
That is, yes. This is the breaking down between the three vendors.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries.
Next motion would be to request approval to enter into contract with JT Tower Services LLC for construction of the tower for a total cost of $24,000.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Deanne. Any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries.
And my final request on this agenda item summary is to request a budget amendment to Police Department fiscal year '25, and that's Fund 212, which is our liquor control fund, 212-301-981-00, by $135,000.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Trenzey. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries. Hopefully, we can put this project to bed finally. It's been, what, five years, I think?
Going on five years, so it's, looking forward again that one finished enough. Mayor and counsel, the next agenda item summary I have for you, this one at least comes with some good news. This is the Burn Discretionary Community Project Fund, and this is a grant that we received, and this is really due to the hard work of the mayor hitting up Senator Gary Peters' office. This is, this is money that, that he, he's to credit for bringing it into the police department. So the city received $153,000 from Senator Gary Peters' office, and this grant money comes with a zero match out of the city government. So this is a tremendous amount of money that we're receiving for the police department. The project, scope of this project is to purchase remainder of our in-service body cam system along with our in-car system. We're also going to be purchasing the Flock camera system, the automatic license plate reader system. I was able to put that into the scope of this project and get it approved by the Department of Justice. All the, all the paperwork is in there regarding the bid process for the body cams. We have already transitioned into the Axon body cams with the prior grant that we got with the SRT grant, so we can't move to a different provider because we're already cut into, into the Axon provider with it. So that's why there is no other bids or anything we can get. This is the only manufacturer that we can get. So I'd be looking for, request a motion to have the mayor accept and sign the DOJ burn grant in the amount of $153,000.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trenzey, support by Ryan. Any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries.
Good job.
And I'd be looking to request a budget amendment to Police Department's fiscal year '25 budget revenue of federal grants. That's 101-301-501-000-PBJA24 by $153,000.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Ryan. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries.
And the last one is I'd request to amend the PD fiscal year '25 expenditure federal grant. That's 101-301-981-000-PBJA24 by $147,100.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Trenzey. Any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries. Lot of work, a lot of paperwork there. Thank you.
It is, it is a lot of paperwork. I do have one motion that's not on there. Am I able to add that on? I just realized I don't have a motion to.
Actually buy it?
Actually buy it.
Oh. Yes.
That's kind of a big deal.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to all of the police chief to engage with.
Axon and Flock.
Axon and.
Flock.
And Flock to authorize them to engage purchase for the described items.
Motion by Deanne.
Support.
Support by Ryan. Any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
I'm sorry, yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to report today?
Yes, just, just an update to counsel and the public. Officer Elizabeth DeMink approached me, and she was wanting to get a commemorative badge to commemorate National Breast Cancer Awareness Month that's coming up in October. So all the members of the department, she designed the badge. It's a very, very cool-looking badge with black and pink. All the members of the department, under their own pocket, purchase these badges, so we will be wearing them starting October 1st to honor National Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you.
Very cool.
Very cool.
Thank her for us.
Yeah.
Mr. Diamond.
Counselor. Good evening, Mayor and counsel. I have one item on the agenda today, and that is for a purchase of a Solo Pro water sewer push camera system. This camera was budgeted for and approved during our budget talks, and I did request $15,000. I did get the lowest bid from Frederickson Supply for $12,785. They did come out and do a presentation, mini cam, the actual camera people came out and did a presentation with me and a couple of the guys. Great item. It'll definitely be help for the city for our water and sewer main, and sewer lines. So I'm looking for a motion for counsel to approve the purchase of Mini Cam Solo Pro 60M Exile Push Camera System with additional roller skids from Frederickson Supply for $12,785 from the Water and Sewer Department Equipment Replacement, 592-536-981-000.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Deanne. One question for me, are there any hidden costs that were, that could arise? I mean, is there cloud service involved with this?
No, everything is right on the computer itself, and we move everything with hard drive. So the only other cost would be by some, it does come with some of the flash drives, that's it. We can move it to computers and wherever. Everything is on this unit.
And is it warranted?
It is warranted. I apologize, but I don't have the warranty year on it, but I can definitely make sure that I get that over to you, but it is warranted.
Excellent. Any further discussion?
That's pretty good, seeing how almost everything is contingent upon a monthly fee.
I know. Seems like that's where everything's moving. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Just a couple other things. The bucket truck that was approved last council meeting is being delivered tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. It was scheduled for today but got pushed back, so we're excited to have that. We're going to pull out the old one, put a next to them. I'll take a picture of bringing the, bringing the new and removing the old, and I will send that to the mayor so he can post it. It's a beautiful truck, so it'll be very nice to add to our fleet, and I thank you again for that. The Trash to Treasure event went well. I worked with Maria Stella during, during the prep and the cleanup. Guys were asked to, you know, do the locations for them, the sites, and everything went well. Cleanup, they did a very good job cleaning up. We just had to remove bags, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Lori, for, for helping out, too. So that was great. We'll be prepping for Nightmare in Auburn and the homecoming for the four, so downtown will be cleaned, will be getting ready. We've got, obviously, we have Chief, and then we also have the pumpkin that has been repaired for Nightmare in Auburn and, if needed, for the homecoming parade. Unfortunately, I will be, not be able to be here that weekend. I'm going to be in Traverse City, so, but we'll have everything scheduled, and the guys will be prepared to handle whatever. The stage will be removed this week. We got a couple small repairs to do to it. It looked like maybe some trip hazards from just the wear and tear, so that'll all be taken care of before it's needed for Nightmare. I want to thank Lynn Carnes for the gazebo donation at Pioneer Park. If anybody hasn't seen, they donated a 12-by-9 gazebo that is on the opposite side of the comfort station, split in half through the fence, so both sides, the large breeds and the small breeds get to use it. Little extra added shelter, so thank you, I want to thank Lynn for that.
And that was through her organization, Woman's Life 911. 911.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. We also had a couple trees donated from a business owner, Frank Jamil, who was actually in violation for planting a couple trees on Hall Road. So with the help of Jerry Hicks, he offered to donate these to us. Two of them didn't look like they were going to make it, whoever he had taken them out, but two of them did look pretty good, and we donate, and we planted those in Pioneer Park as well. So we have a couple extra trees in there. Coming up, I do have, we do have three furnaces that have failed heat exchangers in the garage and the shop that I'm getting, currently getting quotes on. Not something that I budgeted for, so I'll have to see how it works. I, I will be back after I get that handled. And then our, our project's going on. Just run through them real quick. The lead service line replacement, we are finishing up, H R C is finishing up our proposal for, to send over to our city attorney to get a look, to make sure everything tees across, eyes are dotted, all that good stuff. Pioneer Park, if you haven't been over there, they did start excavation for our pavilion, so that's moving smoothly. We haven't had, luckily, they didn't hit any garbage, so we're good. They, the, the five feet that they were required to go down, we hit clay, solid surface, so that should help out with the funds as well. The Van Dyke median and the North Point pavement and the North Point sidewalks, we're just waiting on corrections to the L.A. Anthony Construction, their insurance. They, they keep sending the insurance, but we need actually, the city of Utica to be a, added on as their insurance, you know, they just, we're doing it. So they have to have, they're saying, they sent a blanket one, but we need each project to have specific, projects specific, specific for it. So we're waiting on that. Hopefully, that'll be taken care of soon. We are working on the point inspections. We have just one more page to do, so those are going pretty smoothly. We'll have all our information. I met with H R C today. We'll have the information needed for Eagle by October sixteenth. The sewer rehab project is completed. We have, they got to come back for the one repair that happened on the last sewer line lining segment behind, over by Hydroport, in the, the gas station. One of the lines, when we rerouted flow, couldn't take the flow, and it, and we had one of the lines that broke, so that was repaired. They're going to come back and line it.